Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us for the Selectmen's Meeting on May 5th, 2014. Would everyone please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, universal, justic, and justice.
A couple announcements. Reminder, the Finance Committee Public Hearing on Town Meeting Financial Articles. An FY15 Proposed Budget will be held this Wednesday at 7:00 PM, May 7th at 7:00 PM. Also, reminder, Special and Annual Town Meetings are next Monday, May 12th at 6:30 PM for the Special and 7:00 PM for the Annual at the Millville Elementary School. Board wishes all moms have a great Mother's Day this Sunday. We have approval of minutes for April 22nd, 2014 at 7:00 PM.
Motion to approve minutes of April 22nd at 7:00 PM.
Any discussion? Anyone in favor? Next, we have April 22nd, 2014 Executive Session.
I'll make the motion, accept the minutes for April 22nd, 2014.
All in favor?
Aye.
They do have warrants? First is the payroll warrant for the pay period ending May 3rd, 2014 in the amount of thirty-two thousand, seven hundred, fifty-three dollars and thirty-six cents. I then have the vendor warrant dated May 5th, 2014 in the amount of five hundred, six thousand, nine hundred, thirty-four dollars and thirty-six cents. And you'll note that's much higher than usual. That's due to the BMR quarterly payment in excess of four hundred and eighty thousand on that. And then the payroll deductions for the pay period ending April 22nd, 2014 in the amount of four thousand, four hundred, seventy-two dollars and eighteen cents.
Motion to approve warrants?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have reports of town officials. We have the Centennial Celebration Committee.
Yep, I can do that as, um, I know you've got some material in here also. But this is just a yearly, quarterly, half a year, whatever it is. The Centennial Committee, Jackie, if you want to come on up and then she can just kind of talk about what's in here. But as you know, we had the Fall Fundraiser, which was a great success. The committee's hoping to do that again this fall. Right now, our efforts are on our fundraising in which Jackie is now the Chair of that Subcommittee. And we are going to be getting letters together on all of the options in which people can donate to the Centennial. And then they have their options rather than hitting them up now and then next time and next time. They can kind of pick and choose what they, how they want to support the committee. The committee also, our Banquet Committee is already looking at a place and we're looking at a date for 2016. They're working very hard. Lois Salomi's doing that with her Subcommittee. The fundraising Subcommittee and the Parade Committee, which kind of works with our Town Parade Committee, are working. We're looking also, get some bits, not bids, but get some prices on what fireworks is going to cost and things like that. So starting to shape up our calendar for 2016 at our last meeting. We actually got, you know, when to hold certain items, when the banquet will be, when the parade will be, and those kind of things. So they're forging ahead, but the big push comes now is because the expected fundraising is about thirty thousand. And as you know, the town gives five hundred each year just to kind of give us some money to go out and, you know, get postage, to get those things so that we can make money. So we're cruising along and there is one opening on the committee. But we're also always looking for people to help with the Sub Committees. So they can just work on one project for our groups. If there's anybody out there who wants to do that, they should just, they can email the Town Hall or email myself personally and get them on there. So I don't know if the Board has any questions about the, what we've been doing. Jackie, in your packet has something that will need the attention, so if you want to take that, you can address that.
Sure. So like Jen said, I was voted as to be the Chair of the Fundraising Committee. So something that we thought would be very important would be to kind of consolidate efforts. We have a target of thirty thousand dollars that we'd like to hit by 2016 so that we can provide some nice events for the town to celebrate. And in order to do that, we didn't want to just kind of keep ad hoc, asking people, hey, do you have a donation? Hey, do you have a donation? So we're trying to put a little bit of structure around it. So we came up with a couple of things that we'd like to really focus on. We'd like people to, we're going to do a mailing relatively soon and ask people if they'd like to make a one-time donation. We will ask them if they'd like to make either quarterly or annual donations. That way they're, you know, they could kind of spread it out if they'd like to give a gift but don't necessarily have it right now. We're talking about doing some sort of sponsorship booklet or program that could be passed out at all of our events for the businesses to do some advertising in as well. And something that I had looked into that I'm really excited to announce tonight is we're going to, the Board voted the other night to, or the Committee, to do a fundraiser where we sell pavers. So in your packet, there's a contract from our company, Fundraisers LTD. And they, I had some samples that I brought into the Committee. They sell four by eight bricks and you can have them engraved. And so the cost of the brick plus engraving plus shipping to the town is about twenty-one dollars. So the Committee was thinking about selling them probably fifty dollars. We'll find a location in town to have them put in. We're working with a couple of other Boards in town to secure a location in perhaps a park or a town-owned property. And it'll, you know, beautify the town but also really memorialize people, you know, people, businesses in memory of. Anybody can purchase a brick and really be etched in stone essentially in the hundredth year celebration for the town. So if the Board wishes, we would like to enter into a contract with this. It'd be managed by our Committee. You know, we're not looking for anything from the Selectmen other than hopefully some support for it.
Okay. No problem with that. I think it's great.
For motion?
Sure.
Motion to pursue the paper fundraiser program.
Those touches out. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Awesome. Thank you guys so much. And like I said, hopefully we'll be sending out some letters soon to the town residents and we'll keep everybody updated. So awesome. Good to see everybody.
Same here.
Thanks.
All right. Next, we have the Board of Health.
My understanding is they could not attend this evening, so they sent a written report in if you'd like to get that up.
All right. So this is from Dustin Ciccarelli, Chairman. At last town election incumbent BOH member, Dustin Ciccarelli was voted, is voted for another three-year term. The Board of Health at the April 16th, 2014 meeting unanimously voted for Dustin Ciccarelli to be Chairman for the upcoming year. Catherine Robinson and Robert Marks continue to serve on the Board. The office, as usual, issues out, issues, out-permits licenses and performs inspections. The office has, the office has processed septic betterment loans for a few residents this past year and has one application current, currently on hold until the Treasurer and Town Account clear the next cycle of loans. That's going through the budget system, right? Right now?
It is, correct.
Central Mass mosquito project is underway. This should help with some of the concerns of triple E and West Nile virus. Residents should be vigilant on protecting themselves and this, and either, with either spray, covering up or staying indoors after dark. Should residents not want their property sprayed or want to ensure that their property gets sprayed, please call the Board of Health Office or send in a request in writing to the Town Attention Board of Health. The Board, through the Sol and V and A, held flu clinics in the fall of 2013 at the Senior Center and will be planning for two more clinics in the fall. The clinics are free to any resident in town. And the Board of Health will be performing its annual well water testing on the library, Town Hall, Police Station, Fire Department, Senior Center soon. Republic Services, also known as Allied Waste, continues to pick up the trash and recycling for the town. Republic Services is in their last contract year with the town to expire 6/30/15. The Board will soon discuss the plans are to either renew the public service contract or to go out for bid again. The Board of Health is not required to go out to bid for trash services but generally does to get fair proposal for the town. Republic Services will also, free of charge to the resident and the town, offer a new Sharps Needle Disposal Program. Information flyers are being made up and will be distributed in public locations. The program works by the resident requesting the Sharps kit and when the kit is ready for return, it can be mailed back to the company called Sterrecycle. Postage will be paid. This service will prevent Sharps from being disposed in the trash, which is no longer allowed, allowable. This, this new program will be available June 1st, 2014. Any questions, contact the Board of Health.
I understand mailer was made out regarding this program?
The, the mailer?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The mailer went out to town residents?
Uh-huh.
Yep.
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, can.
I think you were talking about the central mosquito control?
Yes.
Okay, it's bad when you have it at the coast.
Yes. Can you come up to, just so people at home can hear?
You've been here enough to know. People watching might not know me. I have a question on the central mosquito control. In the past, I'd used their services and gone on to their website to request services. Is that form still allowed or do I now have to go through the Board of Health? And from what you're saying, it looks like I have to go through the Board of Health.
Yeah, that doesn't give that option this year, but.
As far as I know, there hasn't been a change.
Yeah.
You can usually call them directly.
Okay.
Unless they tell you otherwise, I would still attempt to go that way.
Yeah, and, and all that, that information is on the cable access when they put the mosquito control?
I don't have cable.
All right, so, and that's it. But you can always call the Board of Health for that information too.
Okay.
If you'd rather, you know, contact them directly.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Sure. All right. Any other questions on the Board of Health? Okay, next on the agenda, we have the first public forum, MES Playground Committee. You should have just stayed there.
Hi, I'm Karen Plumbo and I'm looking for a town direction on possibly getting the Millville Elementary School a playground. I don't know if like a 501(c)(5) is needed or looking for guidance on getting that started or restarted.
Yeah. All right. Now, we looked at that property in the back near the water tank before, so.
That's still the location that we would be looking at.
Okay.
But right now, we're trying to get some direction from the Board about how to approach it with the town. Our feeling is through our research is that it's got to be through the town with possibly a town committee.
Okay.
We are unsure whether or not it has to be a Subcommittee or its own committee and whether or not we think that we need to be a 501(c)(5). I don't know the requirements of a 501(c)(5) through the town.
Okay. That would be a question.
Yep. You only need the 501 filing if you're going to be separated from the town. If you're going to be a town committee, if the Board so chooses to vote to create, you know, for instance, an MES Playground Committee, it would be a town entity, you would use our tax ID number. You wouldn't need to file separately for that.
Is the town a 501(c)(5)?
We are.
Okay.
Yes. The discussion, I think, has been going forward, if a playground is built, the concerns of the Board, my recollection is the future maintenance of that.
Cost of it.
Sustainability.
Right. And any fundraising, if it goes into a town fund, you'd have to realize that the town would control that fund, not the parents' organization.
Correct.
So if it's a town committee, if the Board decides to create a town committee, the town committee could oversee that.
Right, and it would have to be a town committee. The parents' organization cannot take this on. And I do believe you received a letter regarding that before. So now we're looking, it's got to be a town committee and going through the town ways. So we were looking for direction. So I guess now the direction is, would the town prefer to, prefer it to be its own committee or to be a Subcommittee of maybe Parks and Recs? I don't know.
I think that needs some discussion with Parks and Recs to see what their feelings are.
Yeah, we could run that with, through with them and maybe.
And get their recommendation?
Yeah.
Will Rana Taylor come back and what their recommendation, have they been done with?
Yeah, and, and, or if they want to come back as well and all.
Okay.
You know, your group and their, and us all discuss it.
Okay.
Yeah, so get in touch with them, see how they'd like to discuss, if they want to discuss it with us, all three groups together.
Okay.
Then we'll put you guys on an agenda.
Okay.
All right.
If it is a town committee, if it is a separate town committee, what are we looking for? Is there a certain amount of people that we need?
Well.
That we can determine.
Need at least three.
Okay, by establishing a committee, then we can, we can at that point say how many members there's going to be.
Yeah.
Okay.
Also, you, whether or not you want a member of the Recreation Committee to be one of those people, you know, I mean, depending on how it, how it goes.
Okay.
In discussions, because if the Rec, Parks and Rec's going to end up kind of folding into it later, it's something that they may want to be involved with from the get-go. So we can establish that committee by vote.
Okay.
However we see fit. So if you know, right, if you know at that point that we have twelve people who want to be on it, like to stay with a, you know, an odd number sometimes, but, you know, we can, we can establish that.
Okay.
So, and then it can always be varied. We've done that with the Centennial Committee. We've made some adjustments because it wasn't working for us, so we adjusted.
The quorum, the minimum quorum wasn't working.
Yeah, okay.
So we, we adjusted it accordingly. So that there's always still enough people to make decisions, but at least they would be in held up on production.
Okay.
You know, so.
Okay, well, we'll talk with Parks and Rec and we'll be back.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
No problem. I have no correspondence this evening.
Mr. Chairman, there's actually one piece of correspondence that does require the Board's attention. That's the Breaking AIDS Ride. I apologize for that.
Forgot my brief presentation.
The Chief has already signed off on that and this is the ride that takes place annually. It comes through town. It's a bicycle ride.
Yep.
This year, it would be Friday, September, well, it says Friday, September 12th of 2013, but I think they got the year wrong.
Yeah.
But Chief Landry did sign off on that, so I would just need a motion from the Board to approve that and authorize the Chair to sign.
Motion to approve Breaking Parade Ride and to have the Chair sign.
All second, uh? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Try not to forget my homework next week.
Those are the people that marched up Lincoln Street last year.
Yeah. Well. And that's it. No appointments or resignations unless someone popped up through the day, no. We have a report.
Hello? I do, briefly. Just to let the Board know, the Stormwater Annual Report has been signed and filed with the EPA. So that has been completed for FY14. We were informed today by a property owner that they are seeking authorization from US District Court to include the town of Millville as a defendant in an existing lawsuit.
Okay.
So we have forwarded that to Town Council and we will continue to monitor that. But I just wanted to bring to your attention that it is possible that the town may be a defendant in a lawsuit in the future. The Veterans Donation Account, I've been working with Mr. Barber and Mrs. Matthew to create guidelines in an account as Mr. Barber had discussed when he was here a few weeks ago. I had hoped to have that on the agenda for this evening, but we need to tweak the guidelines a little bit. So my hope is to put that on for the next agenda on the 19th. And Mr. Barber has requested to be present for that, so we'll invite him in for that here as well. June 2nd, the Board's first scheduled meeting in June. I am unable to attend that meeting.
You too.
Oh, you can't? So I didn't know if the Board wanted to reschedule to the 2nd and 4th Mondays. There are actually five Mondays in June. If you want to reschedule to the 2nd and 4th, or if you just wanted to cancel the 2nd and just continue with the 16th meeting or whatever your pleasure is.
I would favor the 2nd and 4th, having two meetings.
Yeah, because that will lead into the 4th of July, which.
9th and 23rd.
Uh-huh.
That's, that's fine with me.
It works for me.
Everyone agrees?
Yeah.
Motion?
When is it?
Motion.
When is it?
The 9th and 23rd.
9th and the 23rd.
The 9th?
Yep, and the 23rd.
Go ahead on the 9th, that would be well.
Oh yeah, you're going to be in New York on your bike. Okay. He'll be riding his holly.
It's okay. You have plenty of people.
All right.
And we're all going to be on vacation at some point.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
All second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Get the good stuff done that night and John's not here.
And the last item is I have a end of the year budget transfer request. And as you know, starting May 1st, we can transfer from one budget to another. This has already been approved by the Finance Committee. There was discussion last Wednesday evening in connection with this particular matter. We're seeking to transfer one thousand dollars from the Town Council budget to the Systems Administration budget and that is so we can replace three additional computers this year. We, we went slightly over budget. We're short on one of them. And that's because of the XP operating system is becoming obsolete. So we're kind of pushing to get a couple done before the end of the year. So I would just need a motion and a vote on this one.
So moved. Second.
And I'll put that in the, sign.
All in favor?
All right, yep.
Aye.
That one's good.
Is that it?
That is all I have, yes.
Okay, old business, we have none. New business, we have none. Members Forum, we have none.
I just have a question. Helen, we received an email from you today and I know we're not going to get in lengthened discussion of them. But the process of the emails, even though we delete them from our own computer, doesn't our system back them all up for X number of days?
You can do, on your own personal computers, you can do whatever you want. A town-owned computer, you cannot delete them. They are backed up, but they have to be on your hard drive. They don't back up if they've been deleted.
If I delete it, go on my delete file, they're there.
After so many days, though, they can't. Yeah, but you can delete, delete them. But my, my question is, is with our computer system we have, usually there's certain files that get backed up as part of, just because I've worked in different towns. And the way it's been explained to me is that your, your server will back up. And emails is one of those items that is backed up regardless, like incoming, outgoing, so that because they are a public record, they can be accessed at any time. So I don't know if you want to check with our.
I, I will check. I'm not the most technologically advanced, I'm the first to admit. But I know when the public, public records law changed back in, I think it was July of 2010, there were specific mandates in there with respect to not deleting emails. You had to keep them on there.
Right.
Because when they do back up, they give us a disk, but we can't just put that disk in and pull up an email. It's an involved process. So I believe what the, the new law, the revised law states is unless you're going to print out every email, you cannot delete them. But, you know, I'll check with Worldband and see what their suggestions are.
Because they might have, as the emails are coming in, they might be saving them.
Right. But I guess my concern would be if a resident were to come in and ask to see a particular email, it's not easy to retrieve that.
I agree, but I just want to be sure that we have that backup system in place. And I'm sure Worldband, probably working with municipalities and things of that sort, they must have that backed up somewhere.
Right, well, I know they are backing it up because they give me a disk every month that all of May's emails are backed up.
Oh, okay.
But I cannot guarantee you that if the town clerk is, or any department is deleting something, if it'll be on that backup. So I will check.
Yeah, check to see, because they might be saving them as they're incoming and not as a hard drive backup. And I'm not sure how they're using their servers here.
Right.
You know, is, is the email based off of that server? Are they using something different? How much access do they have? So it's just something to think about and ask them and see. When are they saving them? After we open them or as they're coming in?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Just to save the town if anything was to happen.
Yep. Okay. Is that it for Members Forum? We have a final public forum. Anyone?
My name is Chad Coode, Eric. I live at 283 Chestnut Hill Road. My wife and daughter, and we're town, came to the town back in 2003. When I brought my home, we know that we had water in the basement, mild, handled with a very small one-third horse pump. Heavy, heavy rain or post-winter, you'd hear it come on once in a while. Somewhere about the 2007, 8 timeframe, some drainage project thing went on at the top of the hill, top of Chestnut Hill. And it drove a significant amount of additional water into my basement. I was not aware that that project was going on nor did I connect the dots initially at that time. But I went ahead knowing that there was a water problem to begin with. And I spent six thousand dollars of my own money to have Pioneer Basement come in and put a proper drainage system in there. In the last year, an additional project has taken place on Chestnut Hill Road to relieve drainage issues for persons at the top of the hill, potentially, all the way up to Thayer Street. And they terminated the end of that drainage directly across from my house and they put it into a basin. Something of a well, if you will. And, and according, about every couple of months, they seemingly are snaking it out, cleaning it out. And more recently, we had a heavy rainstorm and I had to run two half-horse pumps for almost three days straight. It's causing me quite a significant financial burden as my electric bill is almost three hundred dollars a month to run those electric pumps to drain it. And I'm, and I'm trying to understand what and when the town will do to complete that drainage all the way down to the bottom of the hill or what. Several calls have been placed to your DPW mailbox here and there's no return phone calls. And additionally, when they're working on the thing, I'll, I'll ask the workers, hey, what's the plan? What's the, where's the end game, so to speak? And they are not able to tell me.
Okay.
Whether it's because they don't know or because there is no plan. So I'd like to understand what the long, short-term plan is and try to make you all aware that, you know, the absence of continuation has created both a financial hardship and I travel quite a bit. the absence of continuation has created both a financial hardship, and I travel quite a bit for work, and I'm concerned one of those days that pump doesn't go off, uh, doesn't, uh, trigger appropriately, will flood my basement, so.
Okay.
Like to hear, kinda what the plan is, I'm sorry, I don't, if the person would have returned my
No, I understood, understood.
My message, I would have asked him to be here so we could discuss it as a forum.
Understood, um, there's, I mean, we appreciate you taking the time to come here and, and, and talk to us about this, and, um, but the unfortunate part of this whole thing is the highway department, or highway surveyor, however you wanna call it, is an elected position.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we have no control with anything other than the budget. Uh, and that's the only thing we have control of, uh, being it's an elected position
It's an elected position that reports to the town?
Makes them accountable to the taxpayer, not, not to any board.
Correct. So they don't report to you at all? So what is my recourse with them?
For the budget iss- issues, they report to us.
So theoretically, I'm paying their salary, to an extent, so what's my recourse with them, do you have any leverage with them?
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Well, what we could do is have the executive secretary make a phone call, send him an email, and tell him to, uh, get ahold of Helen and address the issue, and get back to Helen, see, you know, if he's, when he's gonna go up there, at least we have something to give back to you.
So what is my normal course of action, so I don't bring it to you, I bring it to the highway surveyor?
No, your normal course of action is to contact the highway department.
And, and how do, how does one reach them, 'cause I've, I've, like I said, left messages?
It's through email or, or voice.
He generally utilizes a cellphone, did you, did you try, um, his cellphone, or did you leave a voice message on him?
No, I admittedly, after three times, I gave up, uh, you know.
Internal mailbox? But was it a, a town issued, um, was it a mailbox?
It's a voicemail box, absolutely.
A voice mail box, okay. I'm not sure if he's checking that, but we do have a cellphone, and he, he's generally very responsive if you, if you, um, dial the cellphone number.
So for clarity, for my own, um, edification here, by leaving a phone, a message, he, he won't return that, I have to call a cellphone?
Um, I'm not sure if he actually even utilizes the voice message system, I would have to check with him.
Let me ask you a question, if there was a water main break, how would one get in touch with him?
Mm-hmm. It's the cellphone, um, the number, or you could call dispatch, our dispatch, um, has his emergency contact information, um, they would get in touch with you.
So he'll respond to you folks, but not a citizen?
That you would have to, generally, he's very responsive to anybody, but you would have to check specifically with him. Um, if you didn't call the cellphone, I'm just not sure if he's getting your message, I guess that's the point I'm trying to make, but we can certainly give you his, um, his cellphone number. Did you go on the town's website to the highway page?
Yeah, several times, yeah.
Okay, because I believe that the cellphone number is on there, the number that you'd wanna call.
Okay, um, so for clarity, so I would have a verbal discussion with this person
Correct.
and request, uh, plan of action for this.
Absolutely.
And what if he says, no, um, we're terminating it right there, you're gonna just have to deal with that?
See, I feel, I feel horrible to say it, but like I said, he's, he's, it's an elected position, there's nothing we can do.
You'll have to excuse my ignorance, so an elected position means, in, in theory, that he works for the town, is that right?
Right, so, alright, so you have a, an appointed position, we'll say, like Helen's appointed, alright, she's appointed by this board, so she, she does all of our, our, our work, she, you know, does all the, keeps, keeps the town and, you know.
Her, her direct supervisors.
Yeah, but we're basically supervisors, I mean.
Mm-hmm. So who supervises him, I?
The voters.
The voters, every three years?
Okay, and I'm one of them, so he doesn't have any, um...
Right. His only accountability is the voters, and her accountability is to us. And if people don't like what she does, then they can vote us out, and get a new board to hire an executive secretary.
And that process is a recall, if you sponsor a recall petition, you need twenty-five...
Yeah. Oh, I don't wanna recall him, I simply want him to return a call?
No, you want, yeah.
No!
And finish the drainage, so...
So that's giving you the, the...
I think what we need to do is we need to check with the highway surveyor
Yeah.
to ask him what his voicemail greeting is, and to make an adjustment to his voicemail box if he's not using it here at, um, town hall, which is just a fake, it's a fake mailbox, if you have to call him. Um, if he's not using it, then he should provide his cellphone number on that to redirect for anyone who's coming, or, 'cause I don't wanna not have a cell, a, a voicemail for that, because if, you, I, I just think it's important.
Right.
But I think his greeting needs to reflect how to get in touch with him, 'cause if you called there, it said his cellphone number, I'm sure you would have followed through with that, so we can, we can ask him to change his greeting on there. Um, so it's reflective of how he can get in touch with you.
Great.
Um, but I'm...
I'll seek to get that phone number from you before I leave.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Second part of that question is, in order to execute a project like that, he, I suspect would have had to submit a plan to the town. I know, for instance, when I built my shop, I had to go through the Board of Health, the, um, number of commissions, committees, uh, permitting, et cetera, so I suspect, 'cause he works for the town, permitting may or may not be, but I gotta figure there was a plan submitted. So how do I get to see that plan and see what the long and short term?
Are you talking about the planet Kempton Road, down through Sam?
No, Chestnut Hill Road, so it starts up there and, and stops across two eighty-three.
Yeah. Yeah, it goes across...
I'm sorry, I'm trying to think of where two eighty-three is.
It was, it's about, it's at Kempton Road, but not on Kempton Road, it starts at Kempton.
So Jerry, do you know where you're involved in there?
So you know where Frosty is?
I'm next, I'm one house away from Frosty.
Right across the street.
Across the street and down.
Okay, oh, where Val used to live.
Right.
Okay, I got you.
I bought.
You're right next to Jerry.
I got you, I got you, okay.
Yeah, so I'd like to also see how I can get to see that plan and see what the long and short term... So he's accountable to the voters, so I should have access to that, right? Where does that plan get?
All plans and all emails, all, as you heard, emails are all publicly recorded.
Those were probably submitted, those were probably submitted prior two thousand eleven.
And, and a lot of proj- a lot of projects, we do also have to go through, if there's wetlands anywhere near, we, as well as you, would have to go through the DEP and all that.
There was no, that's funny you say that, because...
And a lot of stuff we go through the DOT too, because that, that's where some of our funding comes from.
Funny you say that, it's a hundred yards... A hundred yards from there?
Yeah.
I had to go do all that.
Yeah.
And they didn't, so I was also curious how that...
Yeah.
There was no DEP sign posted, there was an excavator brought in, a clearing of the, um, piping,
Hmm.
and then, you know, distress to me, so, there must have been a plan, there must have been somebody had to s- have signed off, approved, um...
Sure.
That, that, I, I was, I filled out a lot of paperwork on that project, um, my father at the time was the highway surveyor, so I was his, um, ex officio secretary, at, at my home, so that, that project was to relieve the water that was building on Kempton Road, the kids were having a problem with the bus stops and blah, 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 and icing and all those things. So it was prior two thousand eleven that that project went through. Um, at the time, in just my brief recollection, um, I believe it went through, um, all the, you know, all the pieces, um, to go through.
Oh, sure, but there should be a follow-up, but they moved the problem from one place to another.
And I think what happened... I think what happened is, um, at some point in two thousand eleven or twelve, there was a problem with the, the people who initially put it in, there was a problem with it, and they had to come back out and do some repairs. What happened at that point, I'm unsure of, and I think that's might be where some of those additional drainage and di- things were kinda changed. At that point, I don't know, um, I wasn't involved at that point as to that project, and what they had to do to get it fixed, or if someone just came in and fixed it, I'm not aware of that, um, but that would be...
And there was a couple of sinkholes.
I think they put a well in it.
It wasn't compact, it was...
They put a, um, yeah, a catch basin.
That's exactly what they did.
To re-divert the water.
A dry well, probably.
And they, they redid the asphalt enough to curve it, so they were kinda direct it.
Right.
'Cause it was washing out that driveway.
So, exactly, so I don't know what happened to that, I thought we're supposed to go move on, so we divert it down the street even more to the power lines or something like that, but it just stopped.
Which I'm, I'm willing to accept, I just wanna hear what the timeline is and stuff.
I don't know, I don't, you know...
At this point, it's, you know, almost three hundred dollars a month.
Or if they consider it fix... Wha- what I'm concerned is, do they consider it fixed, because now it is off the roadway, and so therefore
Exactly.
they've done what their, the mission was, was to relieve water from the roadway, now it's in your basement, so that doesn't, that doesn't help you. Um, so we need to figure out...
I think his best answer is, he's gotta get ahold of Brian.
You know, and also, I don't know who the contractors were at the time.
So who wants to see to get a copy of that plan, of that?
I, I have a copy of the original plan, I'm, I'm in the same predicament as Mrs. Wing is, um, I do have the information from um, the previous highway surveyor, I've got the original engineering plan, I'm not sure if that will be helpful to you, I don't have anything, um, for the changes that were made since the original work was done, so.
So you're looking for the originals and the as-bills, maybe?
Yeah, and, and what happened after, so, right, somebody could have executed a plan, but somebody came in afterwards and has been working, and then...
Well, there shouldn't be a set of as-bills made, any project.
Right, but it's...
The engineer...
Those probably were followed.
'Cause if there's any stone walls on the way, or whatever, that, that...
That's what happened.
So two thousand eleven...
There's always some as-bills, too.
Alright, so it's two thousand eleven, a plan was approved and executed, and theoretically, um, closed.
Yep.
But I'm talking about the after.
Right.
So somebody's come along and cleared that out, dug in, put in a new pipe, so there had to have been a plan, or at least those materials were purchased, somebody approved that.
Mm-hmm.
And then, if it's like, oh, nope, we're just stage one this year, stage two is gonna be going further, and then stage three in two thousand fifteen, so be it.
We just wanna know.
I wanna know.
Yeah.
It's costing me a lot of money right now.
Understood.
So I can come and see you?
Yes, if you could, um, put your contact information on this for me, I can, um, get in touch with you.
Absolutely.
Could, as a board, or through Helen, ask our highway surveyor, how, I, I know there has been conversation, but would he prefer a, I know in the past, some boards have had liaisons out to their elected officials, so that keeps that conversation open? Maybe that's something the highway surveyor would like to, you know, either one member of the board, or yourself, to, you know, kinda act as, um, Helen's got enough to do, but, you know, whoever he may feel comfortable with, and having conversations, so that, you know, if something came in to Helen, she could call whoever the liaison is, and we could facilitate and kinda work that, to make sure that, I wanna make sure our residents are taken care of and addressed.
Yeah.
Um, so I don't know if that's an option, or if that's something he'd be willing to think about. So, if we could maybe extend that, that's my personal feeling, at least it's something, it gives us that door to answer your questions.
Yeah, I will.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a board member willing to serve in that capacity, if the highway surveyor is interested in such an arrangement, or?
I'm, if he's comfortable with any one of us, I'd say take it, whoever it is he's comfortable with, then take it.
Yeah.
Unless someone clearly does not want to be that person, but he might be more comfortable with one person over another.
Okay, so you're all willing to, I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, he'd prefer, no, no hurt feelings, Tom.
Thank you.
Alright, you're welcome. Any more public forum? Mrs. Hagerty?
In prepping for the town meeting next week, I did have some, um, questions that I'm hoping that the board will, uh, be able to answer tonight, um, I just wanna get more of a feel of how this town works in preparation for the meeting, um, and what's happened in the past, I've only recently, um, been coming down to the Board of Selectmen meetings and finding out more about what happens in this town, and I would like more of a background knowledge, so I'll be better prepared for the town meeting. Um, one of the questions that I had was, I was wondering how many overrides have been recommended in the last five or ten years, if, just generalizations, I'm not asking for exact numbers, 'cause I don't think you might have exact numbers right now.
For just the school, or for everything?
For everything, I don't know what's happening.
I don't have that number, I'd say...
I don't have that off the top of my head, this would be something I need to look back in the files.
Okay.
If you have a list of questions, I'd be happy to address those and, and reply to you electronically, or...
Okay, well, okay, that would be good, can we go through this?
My best knowledge is that we had our, our trash library senior center override, um...
Yeah.
That's the one that I remember also.
Last year, two years ago?
Yeah, two years, I think, yeah.
Yeah, um, yep, and then, prior to that was probably in, um, for the elementary school, we had to write ourselves in order to get the bond for the school, so that was probably, um, late eighties, early nineties.
Okay, so this is...
And then, probably before that, was probably like an eighty-twoish, in the early eighties.
There was one to run the school a few years back, and that was...
Two thousand eleven, there was an override, there was two override questions, one for the school
Yep.
and one for operations for the town, and they both...
And they both failed. Yeah.
Almost for a hundred thousand, I think it was a hundred and fifty, something like that.
And anything else might have been a debt exclusion, like, to build, to put the roof on the schools, those kinda things.
Okay.
Um, but as an overall for the budget, it's...
That was a year, it was a contingency budget.
Yeah, contingency, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, and I'm thinking that maybe this question might be better answered by the finance committee during one of their meetings, they might have a little bit more knowledge too.
Which you can get all that information, May seventh at seven o'clock.
Well, not necessarily.
Right.
Wednesday night.
Wednesday night, Thursday night, it's the school committee.
Okay.
Okay, um, this might be better answered by the, um, finance committee, is, I had a question regarding the tax rate, and what in the last years, what the tax rates, how it's increased over the last years.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is it the feeling of this board that the finance committee would be better at, able to handle that?
Eight, seven, there you go.
But the, but the tax rate's the blue, so...
Yeah, the board of assessors will have a history, which is next door, nine to one daily, six to eight, um, well, not Fridays,
Get that right next door?
Yeah.
On Wednesday.
Uh, Wednesday nights, um, and you have to remember that the tax rate, um, is based upon house assessment. So if your house assessment, if, if it's a reevaluer, and our house assessments go down, our tax rate looks bigger. Versus when they assess our homes, and they all go up and say, oh, my home's assessed for more, our tax rate goes down, so keep that in mind.
Oh, that's interesting, 'cause whenever I see it printed in the books in our, our public, tax rate's fifteen dollars or seventeen dollars per thousand.
Right, but if we have an assessment year, and all these houses come in at a higher rate, because it's based on the, the market,
Okay.
it's actually a year and a half behind what the market is.
Yep.
Um, so our tax rate fluctuates, so take that in mind, don't say, oh, we've been doing this, because it really depends upon the assessments of the homes
Okay.
also, so it's, it's layered.
At the end of the day, at the end of the year, it can only go up the total bill two and a half percent.
Our, our, our budget goes up two point, uh, two, what?
Two and a half.
Two and a half each year.
Two and a half.
That's it, that's it.
Okay, that's our levy, that's the highest we can go each year, right.
So, yes, at the end of the day, we can only bring our tax revenue up two and a half percent.
Coming into this year...
You, you may see that the value's going up and down, and the rate's going up and down.
The rate.
So if you want to... You have to find the extra half, because it's not there, that's the problem.
Right, uh, right, and I was just wondering how it's, how it's based.
That's exactly...
I just want to, no, I don't want you to look at it and say, why were we, 'cause I can remember one year we were like seventeen, it's because the values of the homes were...
The board assessors recommends to the, to the selectmen normally at the center, I think, what the tax rate should be, and then they tell how much of the levy that they're taxing too, so in other words, you can tax up to two and a half percent,
Mm-hmm.
but is the town actually, uh, doing that? I think we're pretty close to the levy limit right now, I'm not sure with the exact number.
Yeah, and for at least the last part of the session, we should bring right up the levy limit.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sit right on up. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I heard a, a complaint from the audience, uh, viewing at home, that when someone speaks
Yep, okay.
outside, that you, we should invite him to the microphone.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, so can we ask Rich any more questions, he's coming up?
So you can check with the assessors, they should have the history of the tax rate.
Okay, okay, they'll probably, okay.
I just get so excited and having fun, I forget that part.
Okay, um, what is the role or goal of this board?
The role or goal of this board, I'll speak for myself, but I'm sure that they would mostly agree, is to, uh, manage the town, take our revenues, and put all the money to best use for the town, for the people of the town, and, you know, that, that we can.
Okay.
So, um...
Does this board set any goals for in the future, or is it just done year by year?
No, our goals for the future are, well, like the planning board's working on one of them for us, at the master plan, um, to, to figure out a way to increase revenue in other ways than taxation, um, you know, get some sort of a business, uh, area of the town, but right now, my laws don't allow that, so they're working on changing that, and then building a master plan, including, included with that.
Okay.
Um, so that's, that, that's basically, in a nutshell, what we do, and what, what our goals are, is to, you know...
Actually, um, to give credit, Mr. Reposa recently brought to the table that we have a working session, a retreat of sort, is that what you call it?
Retreat.
To discuss exactly what you're saying, what is the goals of our future, what are we looking at, what does the town need as a whole, and then to start planning our goals based upon, um, you know, um, not being reactionary, but being, you know...
Proactive.
Proactive.
Proactive, and so he had, um, and we had some discussion at a meeting in regards to holding something to that effect.
But we're gonna do it here local, we're not going to Vegas or anything.
Well, that'd be nice.
It's a retreat, where you have a discussion, no one votes.
Mm-hmm. Right.
And we, we s- we come up with a mission plan, a mission statement, and, uh, the priorities that we feel the town faces, you know, need to be addressed.
Okay, will the mission statement be put, put on the website at all, so the town people...
Well, it will be, but, and then everybody else is also invited to the retreat, because it's, it's, it's an open meeting, it's an open...
Okay.
It's, it's an open meeting, it's an open meeting.
We're not gonna do any voting or anything, make decisions, we're gonna just collect ideas from, from you people.
Okay. Your ideas. Okay.
And, uh, add some of our own ideas and, and at the end of the day, we'll have, uh, some sort of mission statement to, uh, to provide.
I think you kinda answered this question, was what goals has this board set for this year, and you've talked about, um, we're, a goal that the planning committee is working on, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, did you have any other goals that you wanted to highlight that you might have implemented or had people start working on?
For this year, none, I mean.
Okay.
We have the centennial committee, which, which Miss Wing is part of, um, that's, that's a celebration for the hundred year and. We have little things like, well, that's a big thing, and then other little things like that, but, um, you know, our, our major goals right now is to, um, balance the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Which is not easy, um, and, um, you know, and constantly getting hit with other, other issues and.
I can understand that.
So.
You mentioned at the April twenty second meeting, I believe I have the date correct, that any town resident can look for grants for this town?
Mm-hmm.
If I understood correctly, and you mentioned a website? What, what's, what website did you mention, I wanted to write that down.
Alright, well, there's a website to, there's a couple websites to look and see how the state reps and senators are voting for us.
Okay.
And one is, um, massfiscal dot org, and the other one that I know of is Red Mass, those are Red Mass, that's, that's just exactly.
The one, the one?
But those are, those are private, they're, they're not incorporated with any government body at all, so they're private, uh, views and, and reports, so.
Okay.
The one you mentioned that night, well, I think it was grants.gov on there?
Well, that was the chief, yeah, grants.gov is the grant one.
Yeah.
And then the others is to, and it'll give you contact information for your state reps on those other, the mass fiscal, it tells you how to get in touch with them. To tell them that you're not upset with the way they voted or something, or thank them for voting.
Right. I can understand that.
Alright, so, but grants.gov, and there is another one, the chief did mention to me once before.
I'll ask the chief when I see who.
But there's, there's, yeah.
Sometimes, sometimes Valerie is like watching the le- legislator, um, information in which they put out, 'cause sometimes they'll say, oh, they're gonna be releasing X number of dollars for this prod- for these grants.
Right.
For two towns for this, um, and so when you see it coming, you can almost start to like get, you know, Google, you know, um. What is it, like Google search and you have notifications sent to you?
Right.
So that you can see, okay, the money's been released, where is the website, and so you can get those things coming to you.
Yeah.
Right.
And sometimes, that's a lot of times what I read, is what's, what's coming.
Okay.
So we read, there, I, I'll have to find the, it's on my favorite, so I don't know it, but if you, um, I'll get it to you.
I know it's really hard. Okay.
I'll just have to find it.
Some of the states' websites are not user friendly, to find out information.
No.
'Cause I've tried, and I had a hard time, so I was just wondering.
Yeah, the legislators puts out a, uh, like a bullet newsletter kind of thing, and you can see what's coming.
Right, okay, yeah. Okay, um, s- speaking about, um, has the board contacted any state or federal, uh, representatives regarding our situation here? I mean, we are tight, we're struggling, it seems like we're struggling every year, I was just wondering if the board has done something to contact.
We do.
Okay.
Yeah, and like I said at the last meeting, the vote was not to include local aid and, and, and chapter seventy in this, in the budget talks.
Right.
At the state level.
Okay.
Um, that, that was the majority vote.
Okay.
But Kevin Curros did figure out that what is on the table is a five percent, a possible up to five percent increase for Veterans Affairs, Council on Aging, Libraries, and for other. That he said wouldn't pertain to Millville, 'cause we didn't have that stuff anymore, those services, I forgot what they were, but, he said, we, with the three that we do have. He's working on a possible five percent increase on those. Doesn't help the school, doesn't help the general fund, but it does help those three units that are definitely hurting.
Okay.
As we speak, so.
I'm now, I don't have cable, and I'm now looking at YouTube, um, presentations of past board meetings, um. Is there a way that we can get maybe, and I don't know if the town voters will support this or not, but a way that during this meeting, we can have concerns brought up and said, we would like. I don't even know if this is possible, we're interested in this concern, it's coming up with the State House, you should contact your reps, and this is what we recommend. Is that something that's possible, so that way people out there who can't come down to the meetings and maybe ask a question can get involved and get our voice out there?
I mean, I mean, if somebody's got a question and, and, I mean, I'll, I'd ask a state rep myself for it if you had a question, you know?
Well, I didn't know, like, if you keep an eye on things at the state level, of things that would, of matters that would affect the town, and discuss it in open forum here. And put in a recommendation, we want to contact our rep for this as a board.
Mm-hmm.
Is there something that, is it discussed in open forum where we can then ask the town voters, this is how we would like to do it, this is what the matter's about, you should contact your reps. And it's happening on such or such a date.
Mm-hmm.
It's kinda like helping them out if they're not going to.
Maybe on our website, we could, um, create something with the links to our reps', um, department, uh, mass.gov. Website where their email and phone number is available.
Mm-hmm.
So if people have issues beyond the town of Millville or would like to contact, that we could just provide a link, because like you said, it's not always user friendly, mass.gov is not. Until you get used to it, um, but maybe something on our website, like if you have a concern and you want to, you want to contact your representatives and, or senator, here is their link.
Okay.
Cause we do discuss at times, like we do ask Helen to send an, an email to.
Okay.
Curos or more and say, can we find out more about this, or can they help us with this, you know, there was plenty of times that we've done that.
Yeah.
Right.
I actually find that as a resident, if you email, those staffers that work in those, they're, they, they want to please.
Right.
And they are, they don't even email you, and they call you back within a half hour of you sending an email, trying to get more information, so I agree with you, um.
Yeah.
I would, I, I think we should probably have some kind of, um, link for our residents to easily.
Yeah, their contact information is on mass.gov.
I finally found it.
But that's a, that's tough to, it'd be, if we could give you the link, it'd be easier.
Yeah, maybe we could put it, I don't know where it would fit on our webpage.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, but how local, you know, they can get in touch if they have a concern that they want addressed at the state level.
Also, uh, things like, um, mash, uh, mass benchmarks, University of Massachusetts, um, is a, almost a monthly summary of their assessment of the Massachusetts economy.
Yeah.
And, and, uh, you know, the high points, it's, it's a good synopsis of what's going on at the state level financials.
Association.
The MMA.
Yeah.
Yep.
They put out some really good, um, articles.
Okay. Okay, um, I was wondering, um, for a number of years, I live on Lake Street, which is at the top of the town is what I consider it, um, it's very close to Mendon, and. I know when I come down, sometimes I see signs posted on the community center on Chestnut, I think that's Chestnut.
Mm-hmm.
It seems like that's the first town sign that you find out of anything that might be happening in the town.
Correct.
Yeah, it's not town property.
Okay, well, then you come down here and you have just outside.
The police station, yeah.
The town, the police station, and that is it, I didn't know if it's possible maybe to get a different sign at the beginning of the town's lines. Where we can post things, so people, when their residents were coming in, they might have a better idea of what might be going on.
That's a good question.
In the past, we, we've announced town meeting dates and that kinda thing with portable signs that.
Yeah.
Put up in front of the school and that kinda thing.
Yeah, but unless you're coming down here for a number of years, I never came down unless I was paying my taxes, I never came down to the center of town, I didn't have to. Very poor of me probably, but I never came down because I didn't have to, if something was outside right where I am, I might've come down more, I don't know.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Cause if the Chestnut Hill Association decides to post, you know, a town meeting, say, we'll, we'll say, they can, but they don't have to.
Right. Right, so I just didn't know if that's something that the town, just trying to get more people involved.
No, I understand, I understood.
We used to put signs out for town meetings, but I, even just other things that are going on in town, I think because it's a digital age.
Right.
And that, you know, we have a lot of events or meetings, so to focus on one, you know, Board of Selectmen or Finance or Planning Board, um, on a marquee. At various locations, it's difficult, I know the police chief has been wonderful, he has that roaming sign, the traffic sign.
Okay.
And he has put that up for like the parade, he's put it up for the centennial, and he's very open minded to placing that around town for special events, and he's actually, they'll put it on.
Okay.
Uh, Central Street, and then they move it up to Lincoln Street, and so like, you know, so for two, three days, and then they move it around town for special things, but. Um, I just don't know, like, you know, I mean, how do we choose what one thing?
No, I was.
I agree.
Just wondering if it could, I don't foresee that.
Yeah.
Unless it just is Millville mascot.
In this day and age, social media is far more effective than.
Yeah.
Right, and that's another question I said, I have, is how soon after the meetings and what meetings get posted to YouTube?
That would be a Tim question.
Immediately, like when this meeting's done, upload it to YouTube.
Okay, and do you know which committees?
Just.
Whatever, whatever ones televised, so, so, so pretty much every.
No, it's mainly just us that televise.
And then just for a second.
Everything that gets televised here, uh, is put up on YouTube and like all town meetings and other like events that are filmed.
Okay.
No, nothing's ever not posted on there.
Okay.
But our main committees are Selectmen, Finance, Hearing, or Discussions, or unless a committee themselves asks cable to videotape and to post it up.
Okay.
So it's at each, um, mem- uh, each committee's or board's discretion to ask for it to be televised, 'cause they feel it's important, they want everyone cable.
Okay. Okay, that's all the questions I have for tonight.
Okay.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you, you're welcome. Anyone else for public forum?
How's everybody doing tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good to see you guys. It's been two weeks already, since that goes by pretty quick.
Yeah.
Last time we're here, we just mentioned that, uh, the executive secretary, Terry, mentioned that, uh, the lawyer had mentioned that he was working on something, that he had had some type of, uh, response. Did that actually happen?
Yes, we did receive a reply, um, and, uh, the chairman asked that town council send a letter, uh, directly to you. So you will, should be receiving a letter if you haven't already.
Oh, okay. Has it been any, you know, anything that you guys have, uh?
You'll be getting the letter in the mail, that's all you can say.
We don't even have the, that letter yet.
We don't even, we don't even know.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, we don't even have the letter yet, so.
What was the lawyer's name, I, I don't have any.
Uh, the town council, uh, the firm, we use his bracket and Lucas out of Worcester.
I, I mean, you guys, you know, it's been, sometimes a couple weeks goes by, you might think of something, you might wanna ask me, I know last meeting you weren't here.
Yeah, I wasn't able to be here.
Did you look at it on YouTube?
I did watch it, I did watch it, I need to.
That's good. Uh, any questions, uh, nothing?
No.
I've got no questions, I, I'm just, like you were waiting for the, the decision, I mean, the reason we involved them, like I said, was to make sure that. Uh, everything was done right, 'cause no, nobody sitting up here has, has got a law degree, so, and sometimes laws can be very strange to read if you're not, you know?
Yeah.
We wanted, we wanted the experts on it, you know, so we put the town planner in touch with the lawyer to look over what the bylaws and have been accepted by the towns and how that works, so.
Yeah, 'cause that's, you know, from my point of view and the town's point of view, I mean, we're all family here, right?
Like I said, you're fishing, no comment.
I mean, it's been, he, he had to go back thirty seven years and.
Really?
Well.
Yeah.
All the way to nineteen seventy seven to check and come up with his decision, you know?
Wow.
So.
And, and, again, that's, you know, some of the things from my perspective, I don't really know what, what angle or what the situation is exactly, you know?
So, I mean, I'm sure we're gonna get a, uh, a wonderful bill for it, but, I mean, that's what we have to do, we have to provide that information, so.
Yeah, that's, that's one thing certainly we wanna try to avoid bills, right?
Yeah.
We got enough, we got enough of those.
Especially lawyer bills.
It's like every time I go to the, the mail, you know, oh, there's always bills there, you know, I don't know where they come from.
That's why we should've been lawyers, they don't, they only send it if they don't wish to.
You don't wanna be a lawyer.
Alright, I just wanted to pop in and say hi to, you know, make sure, see how everybody was doing, if it was doing alright.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're all in the same town, right?
Yeah.
You know, we all pay the same tax bills, you know, right?
You got it.
Okay.
You got it.
Alright, thank you guys.
Alright, thank you.
Alright. See you next. Two weeks?
Two weeks, May, May nineteenth.
Take care.
Okay, you too.
Goodnight.
Alright, anyone else for public forum? Brian? Just to backtrack.
Quinn up.
There was a gentleman here from two eighty three Chestnut Hill.
Two eighty three?
A little while, a, it's across from Frosty's, uh, and across from that well that was just put in, the dry well. For the drainage.
The drainage pipe, uh, here, okay.
Yeah. So he, he's gonna be contacting you anyway, just curious about where the project's going, if it's done, if it's going any further.
I think his problem is, is the way he, um, conveyed it to us tonight, that he had always had some water, but now he has, since the project, he has more.
Across the street from.
Yeah.
Where the drainage.
It sounds like Vauze.
It's a tan house to the left of Jerry's.
Right next to Jerry's.
Yeah.
Right before.
He's had some water?
He's had a lot of water.
He's got a lot of water.
He has, he's had a lot of water.
Now the water run, I mean, the pump is running constant.
There're two of them, two pumps.
Used to be just one pump once in a while.
I've, I've heard that before.
Yeah.
I've been, I've been there with a fire truck for six hours.
Yeah.
Pumping that basement out.
Right, so, I mean.
Really?
Just.
We, we took down Jerry's fence, backed the truck up, because the water was up to high level.
Well, he never said that to us.
So anyway, he's gonna call you.
Okay.
I just wanted, you were here and you missed him by five minutes, so I thought, that's why you came down, I thought you was watching it at home.
No.
So, I just wanted to tell you that, so you, you know, he's gonna, it's Jared Pudry.
Yeah, I've got his contact information here, if you wanna take that.
And he's concerned about the drainage across the street.
Well, he's, he's, well, he's just, he feels that since the project from Thayer Street down was done.
Okay.
That his water problem has intensified.
Okay, what had, had happened across the street.
So we told him to get in touch.
Was nothing new, that was existing a lot longer than we have been alive.
No, I know, there's new riprap rock there right now, but that's.
We cleaned.
Yeah.
The existing infrastructure that was in the ground.
Okay.
We had, uh, a company come in and rotor root of the pipe.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, pipe ended up being too long for a rotor rotor, um, so at the five hundred foot mark, which is in front of, uh, I'll call it Station Two, you'll see a manhole.
Yeah.
We dug down and broke the pipe, so we could then extend the rotor rotor, so now that is a drop inlet, um, brought that up to stormwater compliant.
Yeah.
And finished rotor rodering the pipe, the pipe ended where that riprap is.
Yeah.
So with that, we brought that up to what needed to be, we put a silt barrier in the bottom. Um, put the stone on top, and that is just natural flow water, uh, you might've seen about a year ago, we had a pipe sticking out at, at the Station Two driveway.
I remember that, yeah.
That is the water that is in that, that drain line that was clean.
Is that constant, Brian, or that just?
Uh, it does dry up in the summer, we noticed last year, you, you'll probably see in June, July.
We got quite a lot of it.
It, it goes away.
I, I will say, in, in all fairness, my sun pump is still pumping, I mean, a, a couple times a day, and I'm not, I'm not, you know, in a problem water area, I've.
You were saying, we had a long winter.
It depends on how you get it, whether you're getting runoff or whether you're getting once, you know, if you're getting it from the groundwater, so, I mean, depending on the issue, he might've, he might be getting both now, or one, or, you know, so.
Yeah.
But it is, I will attest that my sun pump at least is still going.
I have to say, the water table's still quite high.
It's very high.
It's very high, yeah.
Very high.
Yeah, I still, my my little stream is about this wide right now still, so.
Okay.
So I I just wanted to give you a heads up, that's all.
Brian, I actually, um, when he was, um, the gentleman was here, we were talking, and I guess what happened is he he called your voicemail. And that's not your primary way of communicating, so. Uh, the voicemail, the mailbox here through the town hall.
Okay.
So I think what we might need to do is get with Helen, get in there and fix the greeting that says how to get a hold of you.
I don't believe I have a greeting there.
It's probably my father's voice.
Maybe, maybe just put a greeting on and say this.
Well, I don't have a phone.
Right, it's a mailbox you call into.
But there's a mailbox here at the.
That takes phone calls, like when you call in, the eight four three three number, it guides you through, and then it's like, if you're on highway, you hit this. And then, um.
And I believe that was set up, if anything, at the beginning.
Right.
And it was told to call this number.
So I guess.
And I never.
Maybe.
Ever.
Yeah, check it, and if it, so, you don't have a problem then if 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 us, somebody changes it to make sure that. That that phone number's on that greeting.
If if you need to get ahold of me, you call the.
No, we know that.
Phone, I'll tell them the residents of Millville. You can get my number off the website, um, if it's not urgent, you feel you wanna email me. I try to check it every day.
Yep.
One day rolls into another, and sometimes it's two, three days.
Yep.
Is the email through the town?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, and.
I'm wondering if we, if, cause there's a lot of things that we can do to be proactive, to make sure the person knows, maybe, um. We could have an auto response to his email that states that this email is checked weekly, which kinda gives you some leeway.
Well, the ideal thing would be is.
But to say on there, this email, this.
More, if I could get the email to come to my phone.
Right.
We've had this conversation.
But I'm wondering, but I'm wondering if you have an auto response that this email is not checked, you know, frequently. And that the best means of communication with you is by calling whatever that number is, so someone emails and they get an auto response to you.
If this needs immediate attention, call.
Or if you have not heard from, you know, within three days or within five days, because people understand that highway is not an office job, who's. Be able to check and receive emails, but if you do not have a response after X number of days, whatever's comfortable for you. Please contact this cell phone number or an emergency, so there's some little things that we can do just to kinda keep the person from feeling that they're. You know, that they're left out, or they're they're not being, you know, applied to.
I don't even know the the phone number that he would be calling, but, because that's not on the website either.
No, because when you call the town, the town's general number, eight four three three, it says for Highway Surveyor, hit four, I think it is, or whatever it is.
Okay.
They hit four, and it just goes to that voicemail.
It goes to the phantom.
So Helen will fix the voicemail box, so it said, this, you know, highway, you've reached the highway department, please call that number.
Right.
Okay.
Alright.
Well, thank you.
Cause if people don't go on the website, cause there are still people that don't have email, I mean, don't even have computers, I know so. So, and, so they won't have access to a website to get that number, so we'll do that.
And the other thing, Brian, that I had brought up was, um, I didn't know the best way that you would like to communicate. I know in the past, some boards had liaisons where one person dealt with an elected official or a department head, and I didn't know if that's something that you wanted. If that's something open, or if you just kinda wanna continue status quo, so that, you know, we keep the lines of communication open where Helen contacts you. Either via phone or whatever method that you have now.
That that works, um, I know me and myself and, uh, Mr. Repose had a conversation a few weeks back, um. He politely told me that he wanted to see my face more, um, that's my. Well, I was trying to be here earlier, but. Things roll one to another, I mean, if if you feel a liaison would work better to. Um, report back to you by all means, I mean, we we can communicate with one person or.
It's whatever you prefer, whatever works best.
Whatever's easier, what are you comfortable with, Ryan?
Right now, Chrissy's your main contact.
Yeah, yeah, and and she's a peach, I mean.
That work for you? If that's working, Chrissy reports to Helen.
I just think.
She was the first one who caught on to calling, and after I told her that that one day, I almost regretted it.
Yeah, but sometimes it's easier to get one phone call coming in, it does list your cell home in the the three one one seven. So I think we need, I think we need to fix the mailbox here at the town hall, and I think maybe, maybe some consideration to an auto response for the emails. I would need, um, Mr. Malali's permission to access his email and set that up, otherwise he could do that himself.
Is that the same setup as if you were away?
Mm-hmm, right.
Okay.
So it's, it's, so every email that comes in will get a response that says basically, you know, I don't. Emails aren't checked frequently, or whatever you, the wording is, and leave your cell phone.
Problem, I'll come see Helen and get straight love.
That's all, yeah, so if they wanna talk to you today, they can, your your cell will come up and they'll call you.
Yeah.
Otherwise, they can wait a few days for.
Yeah, it's just, at at least they know that they're not, I could, I can understand how someone, you know, be sitting there going, I haven't heard from him, it's been a few days.
Yeah, this gentleman thought he was getting blown off, and we found out he was calling the town email as well, I mean, voicemail.
Voicemail, which is, we need to clean that up.
No, he doesn't.
If it's the same gentleman I'm pretty sure we were talking about, uh, when we did the work, he he made a comment. To me and the same reply, I think I just said to you, as long as, uh, it's the same house, but.
Okay.
I I'm thinking it is.
Alright.
Well, it seems they, of course, we don't, but you have some history on that, so.
I'm not just talking a few years ago, I'm talking ten, twelve years ago that I've been there.
Well, they're saying you have history, we we did, so.
Yeah, you had more in history. He did say that he did speak to workers who were out there, now, who those were, I'm not sure.
Oh, ten or twelve years ago, he's only been there since oh three. Yeah, alright, thank you, thank you, Brian.
Good to see you again, Brian.
Over here.
Alright, don't get too comfortable, cause it's over. Alright, so any, any more public forum? Alright, uh, next regular meeting is gonna be Monday, May nineteenth, two thousand fourteen, at seven PM. Uh, and we're gonna do signatures right now, and then I'll be looking for a motion to go. Enter executive session on Mass General Law, Section Thirty A, subsection twenty one A, part two. And immediately after the executive session to re-enter this meeting and only to adjourn.
So, second.
Roll call for that? Aye.
Aye.
Aye.